We won't riddle sit down here, but that's okay. It'll be recorded. That's important.
You ready to go? Yep, okay. Folks, if I could have your attention, we do still have a electronic issue a little bit, but I think we've got a workaround done here so we can move forward with our hearings this morning. Kevin Jeffries, Chairman of the Planning Commission, would like to welcome you to our August 22 meeting. Just like to remind you, if you have a phone with you, to please either turn it off or turn it on vibrate so that it doesn't interfere with the cameras here in the courtroom. Before we get started this morning, if you would, join me for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you for that. And let's see, I guess I call on Ms. Ethel this morning to get everybody sworn in, I guess, before we get started. Ms. Fox.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. All right. With that, first thing we have on our agenda this morning is approval of our minutes, Commissioners, from our July 25 meeting. I think you have a copy of those. And are there any additions or corrections we need to make to the minutes? Any additions or corrections? Okay, seeing none, the Chair would entertain a motion to approve those minutes as mailed. Okay, got multiple motions. John Falvey, have a second. Okay. And Mr. Douglas. All right, any discussion on the motion to approve the minutes as mailed? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of approving our January 25 meeting minutes signify by saying aye. All opposed, no. Okay, those minutes have been approved. All right, we will get started with our rather long docket here this morning. We've got several docketed items today, so it'll be a pretty full day, I think, for Commissioners and for folks that have joined us here this morning. So I guess, Ms. Fox, if you would, let's start with the first docketed item, please.
Docket PZ-17-024, application has been filed by Creek Alley Contracting for the approval of a minor plat on approximately 2.18 acres. The property is located at the 4,800 block of Sadler's Mill Road, LaGrange. The property is zoned R2A residential district.
All right, thank you. And Ms. Alvey, I assume you'll be introducing the docket for us.
Good morning, Amy Alvey, Oldham County Planning and Development District. As Ms. Fox stated, this is an application for a minor plat for property located at the 4,800 block of Sadler's Mill Road in Buckner. The property is zoned R2A residential and is approximately 2.18 acres. This is an aerial view of the property outlined there in red. You can see it as a vacant piece of property. This is the Oldham County Country Club here, and then this is Morgan Place subdivision here, and then this abuts Kammer Place subdivision to the west. This shows the current zoning. The brighter yellow is R2 residential, and then the tan color is R2A residential. Sure, this shows the existing zoning. This site came before the Planning Commission in February of 2017 for a zoning map amendment from R2A to R4 and a development plan consisting of two buildings, each containing five condominiums. The Planning Commission recommended approval of this zoning change to fiscal court and also approved the development plan, but fiscal court denied the zoning change request, which in turn nullified the development plan at that point. The applicant is requesting approval of a minor plat to shift property lines between two tracks and then create three lots from each residual track for a total of six lots. The proposed plat shows three shared driveways between the six lots. So this is the way that the property is currently platted now. You have Track 1 that is outlined there in red, and then Track 2 is outlined in blue. So that is the current configuration of the two lots on the subject property. What the applicant is proposing to do is to shift the line between Tracks 1 and Track 2 to make them more of equal size, and then proposing to create three tracks from Track 1, and then you'll see here they are shared driveways, and then three tracks from Track So, once it is completed, there will be six residential tracks created from the two lots, which can be done by right at this time. They're not asking for any variances or waivers. Staff brought this through the Planning Commission just for transparency purposes because of the most recent case that went before the Planning Commission.
Can I just add it? Let me just add at this point, there's also no new roads being constructed, so that's all part of the minor plat process, is when you aren't making new roads, you can do it by minor plat.
The minimum lot size in R2A is 7,500 square feet, and minimum lot width is 50 feet. The average proposed lot size is 15,820 square feet with lot width of 90. The proposed minor plat meets all zoning regulations and requirements. This is the east adjoining property owner. This is the east view. This is Sadler Mill. It was very sunny that day, hard to get pretty good pictures, but that is the east view going back towards Highway 393. This is the northeast view, looking into the land. This is the north view, which again, that is Morgan Place subdivision. Northwest view, looking towards Kammer Place subdivision. This is the south view, which is technically across the street, which is the golf course for Oldham County Country Club. This is the west view, looking into Heather Hill subdivision and Kammer Place subdivision. This is the west view. There is an access road that goes back to the water tower that is located there, and this is the trade line that's between that access and Kammer Place subdivision. And then this is the north to south view. I had to go up and turn around by the water tower to come back out, so I got a view from the north looking back out. This is Sadler's Mill running this way, just to give you that perspective. So in summary, the applicant is requesting approval of a minor plat to shift the property lines between lots seven and eight and create six lots from two. That is all that I have.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff on this docket? Any questions? Mr. Douglas?
Amy, I'm just curious, on the application part of this, who's the owner of the property now?
Creek Alley Contracting.
So it was sold?
They own the property.
Because I know the last hearing, it was.
It was still in real estate, correct. No, they have purchased the property.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions for staff? Okay, seeing none, we'll now move into the presentation by the applicant or representative and others in support of the application. I assume, Mr. Baxter, that would be you.
That would be me. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Barry Baxter, 117 West Main Street here in LaGrange. I'm an attorney. I represent Creek Alley Contracting, which is an LLC. One of the principals is Kyle Onan. He's seated in the front row. He will be available if you all have any questions, but I don't know that you will of him. Also, I've got Bob Vinsand, an engineer here, who is the one who has redrawn the lots that exist here, and he's the one who will explain the moving of the lines and everything. Essentially, what we've got is something that normally you all would not see. We've got two tracks of land that already exist. We're asking to move one of the lot lines to make that lot bigger so that you have two lots that are roughly the same size. And then normally, under the minor plat situation, we would ask staff to approve dividing that into three lots, each one of those. So that's essentially what's going on here.
Mr. Baxter, let me get them sworn in, if we could.
Sure. Well, Mr. Vinsand's going to come up here anyway, so.
Okay, all right. Ms. Fox?
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So at this point, I'm going to ask Bob to come up here and explain a little bit of the history and then to show you all what he's proposing that we do with the property.
All right. Bob, just name an address for the record, please.
Okay, it's Bob Vinsand, Vinsand Engineering, Lance Irving, 306 West Jefferson, LaGrange, Amy did a great job of explaining this, but I'm just going to kind of go over it again real quickly.
Turn it over.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, this is the plan that was approved by the Planning Commission back in February. There's 10 units, and you can see by the coverage on the ground that what we're asking for with six individual home sites would be less than the 10 units that were proposed and approved back in February. Again, this is the property as it currently exists. It's in two tracks. One track is a little bit over half an acre, that's Track 1. Track 2 is 1.6 acres. It's contained in two separate deeds, even though Creek Alley owns the entire property. There are two separate parcel that we have here. And that's the big reason why that we're here, is for transparency. It's not really a circumvention of the regs, but they certainly could have put the property in two different owners' names, shifted the property line, and then come in with the division of the three tracks on each one, and they didn't want to do that. They wanted to make sure that everybody knew what was going on up front. This drawing represents the property shift. The Z outline is the existing property line between Tracks 1 and Track 2. We'd like to move that to the east, about 113 feet, and that would create two roughly We would then take what Amy referred to as Track 2 and divide it into three parcels. I want to emphasize again that in R2A zoning, you can actually have lots that are only 50-foot wide. These are a little bit in average, a little more than 90 feet in width, and also, you can go down to 7,500 square feet, and the average area for all these tracks is about twice that. That's Track 2, and then that's Track 1. We've had a couple of comments. One was on the driveways. There are some trees at the southeast corner, approximately right in this area here, that need to be taken out for site distance, and there's no issue there. We also have a comment from the LaGrange Fire Protection District. There's a fire hydrant here at the southwest corner of the property, and then there's another one that's across the street, actually on the golf course side. And it's marginal as far as how close it is to having our fort, to meeting the fire hydrant ordinance, so the owners agree that we will go ahead and install a new hydrant somewhere in this area here. We'll pin down that location later with the fire department. That's really all I have.
And Bob, just to be clear, I mean, you're talking about some comments and things, but those would be things that normally we would address in a major subdivision plan. We don't have that. Those were not things that we were necessarily required to get in order to get a minor plat approved, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And, you know, we have that information, but it's not something we had to have in order to appear here today, like school capacity letters and all that kind of stuff.
Right, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes our presentation. Mr. Onan's here, if you need to ask him any questions, and certainly we'll be glad to answer any questions that you all may have.
Okay, all right, we'll get to that here shortly. Next thing I had on the agenda here would be, is there anyone here that would like to speak in support of this application? Anyone here to speak in support of? Okay, seeing none, no one. We will now move into testimony and questions by those opposing the application. Is there anyone here that either has questions or would like to testify in opposition to this application? Okay, seeing no one. We'll now move into questioning of the applicant by the Commissioners. Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant? Okay, quite a bunch this morning. All right. With that, do you have a final statement, Mr. Baxter?
With those blistering questions, Your Honor, I think I'll probably just sit down at this point.
Okay, all right. All right, with that, docket PZ-17024 is completed, and I would now call on Mr. Urban to outline what's being requested here this morning on this docket.
Well, this actually is a fairly simple request, and again, the reason it's here is because there had been a proposed development plan for transparency. I felt best that we come for the Planning Commission, so if you're finding that the minor plat is in compliance with our requirements and our regulations, which staff has told you that it is, and you choose to make a motion to either approve or deny, I think it's really simple. It really just complies with our subdivision regulations. It's not need to be tested really against the comprehensive plan unless you so choose to do that, but typically, the zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations are being met by this minor plat application.
Okay. Anything else? There's no binding elements or anything that's.
No, they're required to do certain things, like the fire hydrant, or they're being asked to add a fire hydrant and clear trees. Encroachment permits need to be requested from the county engineer's office, and if there's not enough site distance, need to clear the trees. You'll have to do that to get the encroachment permit and then simply record the lots and get building permits, so there's really no binding elements attached.
Okay. Mr. Carter, anything that you need to add?
No.
All right, at this point, the Chair would entertain a motion on docket PZ-17024. Mr. McWilliams.
Right here in the microphone, Nowhere Land.
Okay, all right.
Come your way, Missy. Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the request for the minor plat. It does comply with the zoning ordinance, meets all the zoning regulation requirements. It exceeds the minimum lot requirements as stated almost double, which is a good thing, and I think it is consistent with the properties that surround this particular piece of property, and it's also consistent with our subdivision regulations, so.
Okay. Mr. Carter, is that an adequate motion?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Got a motion on the floor? Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Mesker, seconds. Any discussion on the motion to approve docket PZ-17024? Mr. Horton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For clarification, Ms. Alvey, I think, said that the applicant by right has the right to do this, and it was not required for them to even come here. They were doing it for transparency and to enlighten us about other things they might be doing, so am I correct in that assumption?
Yes. It's not an assumption, it's a fact that.
Am I correct in that fact?
Yes, yeah. You know, the, and let me just explain that very briefly. You know, KRS 100 says that the Planning Commission can hire professional staff and do assigned duties, and one of our assigned duties is to review and approve minor plats if they're in compliance with the regulations. And the only reason, again, in this case, that we're here is because of the previous case. So we wanted to notify adjoining property owners so that one day, if there was construction going on, we didn't get a lot of phone calls saying what happened and when and how, and that's really why we're here.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion to approve? Okay, seeing no hands go up, I'll call on Ms. Fox to, let's do the vote on docket PZ-17024. This is a motion to approve.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Kleinfus?
Yes.
Mr. Mesker?
Yes.
Mr. McWilliams?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Bonet?
Yes.
Ms. Crosby?
Yes.
Falvey?
Yes.
Mr. Finney?
Yes.
Mr. Hampton?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
All right, the docket PZ-17024, motion to approve, has been approved on a vote of 13 to 0. Commissioners, I would assume, we'll just move right on into our next docketed item? Okay. All right, Ms. Fox, if you would, let's read our next docketed item, please.
Docket PZ-17-025, application has been filed by Lucky Lane LLC for approval to amend a binding element attached to the original approval of C&amp;W Park. The property is located at 2,100 Spencer Court, LaGrange. The property is zoned I1 Light Industrial District.
All right, thank you. And Ms. Alvey, I assume you'll be also introducing this docket.
Maybe just give me just a second here. I think I pulled up Brooks by mistake. Oh, there it is. Switched around here, sorry. As Ms. Fox stated, this is an application filed by Lucky Lane LLC for the approval to amend the binding element that was attached to the original approval of C&amp;W Park back in 2005. The applicant's property is located at 2,100 Spencer Court here in LaGrange. This is an aerial view. This kind of gives you an overview of the entire area. This is Commerce Parkway here, and then this is Spencer Court, and the applicant's property is highlighted there in red. This is a zoomed-in version of the same aerial, just kind of gives you the layout. They have since done an addition onto the building. Our aerial hasn't been updated since the addition to the existing building there. On December 19 of 2000, the Oldham County Planning Commission approved an application for a preliminary plan to allow the development of industrial/commercial park to be known as C&amp;W Park. The proposed development consisted of 35.54 acres with 16 lots, having a minimum lot size of 1.28 acres. The prior plan expired on February 22 of 2005, and the Oldham County Planning Commission approved an application for a preliminary plan. So the plan expired, and they had to come back for the Planning Commission to have the plan reapproved for the 16-lot industrial subdivision that was known as C&amp;W Park. Again, that was in February of '05. The applicant is requesting to amend the binding element for C&amp;W Park, specifically binding element number four, which was in reference to access to Commerce Parkway. The element reads as follows: Lot 1 and 13 shall not have direct access to Commerce Parkway. Lot 1 is currently accessed via Spencer Court, and the applicant wishes to amend that binding element to allow Lot 1 to have access onto Commerce Parkway, giving Lot 1 two means of ingress and egress. This is the survey that was provided by the applicant, highlighted here in green. This is from Spencer Court. That is the current entrance that is used, so everyone would come in here and then park and then back out, and then go back out to Spencer Court. This is the proposed entrance and exit onto Commerce Parkway. The applicant has stated that the current use of Lot 1, which is the Learning Garden daycare, is experiencing major difficulties with internal flow of traffic and safety of children during drop-off and pickup times, and they also have stated that it is difficult for the Oldham County school buses to maneuver through the site, and there is not adequate room for the bus to turn around effectively. Both of these statements came from their justification statement. This is looking, I tried to get as much of the site as I could from the field across the street, but if you go back far enough, you start picking up one of the rolls of the hill, and it blocks out the building. So this is as much of the site that I could get from across the street. This is the current addition that the applicant has added on to her center. This is looking at, from Spencer Court and Commerce Parkway, looking west, going towards Buckner. This is the applicant's building here. This is Spencer Court off of Commerce Parkway, and that is the applicant's current curb cut there. This is the actual curb cut from Spencer Court, the entrance into the Learning Garden. This is the west view. Again, I was trying to get more. Again, this is the new addition here, and this is the location of where the new, or the proposed access point would be. This is just another view from across the street. This is the east view, looking back towards LaGrange. This is the east adjoining property. This is a vacant lot here, and this is one of the Cedar Lake properties. And again, this is just another view looking Commerce Parkway into Spencer Court, and this is the applicant's property here. This is the south view, which is vacant property. It's just an open field at this point, which backs up to 71. The applicant is requesting to amend the binding elements for C&amp;W Park, number four, stating lots 1 and 13 shall not have direct access to Commerce Parkway. That is all that I have.
All right, before we get into questions for staff, if there's anyone here, I didn't mention this earlier, having trouble hearing, we do have some headphones that are available, wireless headphones that we could get you that would help you, you know, hear, especially if you're sitting further in the back. So sometimes these microphones don't work, don't pick up real well, but just want to make you aware that that's available if you do need it. So, Commissioners, do you have any questions for, Mr. Harris, do you have anything that you need to add? Okay, all right, let's, Mr. Horton, I think you had your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Alvey, the speed limit is 45 miles per hour on Commerce Parkway. Do you know, or what is the speed limit on Spencer Court?
I do not know.
Is there a minimum or standard of 15 miles per hour or something? I remember seeing that somewhere.
I'm sorry, I was talking to Chairman, I didn't hear your question.
The speed limit on Spencer Court, it's not posted.
The default speed limit is 25.
Okay, so the default is 25 miles per hour?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Urban, you had something you wanted to add?
You know, one of the things I wanted to add is that we've been grappling with this curb cut only because we are in the process of hiring a consultant to help us understand the future widening of Commerce Parkway. And although this meets the, kind of the distance from Spencer Court, and it's really an acceptable curb cut, I want to reserve the ability to be able to say, look, in the future, if we widen Commerce Parkway and this interferes either with capacity or safety issues, that it could potentially be revoked. Corey Rusnak from the city isn't able to be here this morning, and I'm not testifying for him, but he concurs with that comment, and I'm not sure, Scott's now moved forward, whether he also agrees that, you know, there's, you know, we don't know what the road's going to be, but we're about to study it, so.
Mr. Harris? This is our county engineer, Scott Harris, and just name an address for the record, if you would.
Scott Harris, 100 West Jefferson Street. I would like to add that if this is a path for buses to drive through, which I believe has been proposed, this drawing will not work. The radiuses are not, will not allow the bus traffic through, so they will need to be bigger.
All right, thank you. All right, Commissioners, any additional questions for staff? Mr. Douglas?
Yeah, most of them, or two of them were answered, one by Mr. Urban. The concern I had, or question I had, was when the binding element was put in, should not have egress from Lots 1 and 13, should I have direct access to Commerce Parkway? What was the reason for that? Was it a traffic study for that reason?
I provided you guys the minutes as much as I had, and there was nothing in the minutes that I could read into of the reason or justification of why.
And I can only conjecture, and I want to say that, yeah, that it was, it is, this is conjecture, that again, there's ample rideaway for expansion of the roadway, and we knew that this could be connecting not only Kentucky 53 with Kentucky 393, but as the business park develops, there'd be more traffic, and I, you know, it makes sense that it limits some access onto Commerce Parkway. At this particular time, however, it doesn't appear to be a major issue, but if we widen or put in turn lanes, then we're going to have to be able to try to accommodate all these curb cuts all up and down Commerce Parkway, and we don't know, again, exactly what that's going to be.
So what effect does it have on the traffic? Let's just say the road isn't widened right away, but let's just say, I don't like to do what ifs, but we have four lots across the street. If those four lots are developed, and each one of them has an entrance to Commerce Parkway, what does that do to the flow of traffic? I mean, when you have this many entrances.
Right. Well, those, I'm not sure that those are actually four lots across the street. I didn't really study it, but I think there's really only one line.
I didn't really study it, but I think there's really only one lot, or it's under one ownership anyway, and there is no development plan, and we would have to weigh the entrances for those based on what exists. You know, we can't say...
I just want to make sure that we're not creating a problem down the road.
Well, and that's what we're trying to avoid, and I've actually got a potential binding element prepared that would address that. But simply, again, there's no development plan across the street, and we don't have an idea of what the road widening is going to be at this point. My understanding is, at minimum, it would have a center turn lane, and then a single lane in each direction, in which case, that allows cars making turning movements to get, you know, out of the flow of traffic, so.
Because we did have other developments that are being proposed through that area that have had traffic studies done, based on the existing, meeting the standards of the roads now.
Right.
So, I just didn't know what additional traffic. Also, I guess my next question would be to Mr. Harris, or if you could also go back to the photo showing the entrance, like where the road, the curb would be cut into, going up into their parking lot? Right there. How does, this, I guess this is for you, Mr. Harris. How would that road be cut into that incline from going across that ditch up to that parking area? Would they have to build that up, and what would that do with the drainage area through there?
They would obviously need a cross-drive culvert under their drive that would be sized by the city, since this is actually...
Because I don't imagine they're going to cut down the parking lot.
I haven't seen any plans to determine how they might do that. Bob Benzand would submit something.
Oh, ask the applicant.
For approval, but it's a simple matter of matching where you want to go to, where you want to come from. It's not really that difficult in most instances. We would want to try and keep the basic contours of the path, the shared-use path, but I haven't seen any options. Another's been presented to me on how they...
Is it close to that drainage swell, or the basin, where I guess those rocks or whatever?
I don't know.
Assuming that's a drainage, that would probably be an applicant question.
Yeah, I don't know where they're going yet.
I just didn't know if he looked at it or not.
Well, I have an approximate sketch, but I also can't place that on this picture, not seeing any lot lines, so. Not sure.
Thank you. All right, any additional questions for staff? Ms. Smith?
Mr. Harris? You said that this proposed new entrance/exit is not sufficient for a bus?
The width and the radiuses. Buses need a big radius to turn.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And what... How big would it have to be to, is there a formula that you use?
There's actually several charts. We would probably use the Ashtoe Green Book.
And when you looked at this, was there any way to actually put that there with the formula that's required for the radius for the bus?
I didn't...
You didn't do that?
It wasn't a design, it's a conceptual sketch, but when we go through things like this, sometimes there's a confusion when it passes that, well, this was approved. In my mind, you're approving a curb cut, an entrance tying the road to the parking lot. You're not approving the width of it, you're not approving the radiuses of it, the elevation of it, the grade of it. That'll be between Bob and his submittals, and in my office, and my approvals. I was just trying to be clear, although I'm sure they already know this.
Yeah, but I didn't, and I need to know, but, thank you.
They haven't gone through any construction plans, because they didn't know whether it was going to be acceptable or not. This is the conceptual level, so those details come out when they submit.
Although Bob wouldn't mind, they probably aren't going to pay him until they actually have something to design.
Thank you.
All right, any additional questions for the staff? Mr. McWilliams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At some point, I don't know if this would be staff or the applicant, but I would like for somebody to just take a pen and show me traffic going in, where it's going to go once it gets in, if kids are dropped off.
The applicant, I think, would be able to answer that, so, better than staff.
Thank you.
Okay, any additional questions for the staff? Okay, seeing none, we'll now move into the presentation by the applicant, or representative and others in support of the application. And Mr. Baxter, I assume you're up again?
That is correct, yeah. Can I get my applicant, her builder, and Mr. Benzand sworn, if I could, please?
Sure. Ms. Fox?
Do you promise to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Okay.
I'm not going to stand here very long. Barry Baxter, 117 West Main Street. I'm an attorney, I represent the applicant, Lucky Lane LLC. Actually, Bob, don't sit down, because you're coming right up. Mr. Benzand is the one who drew this. He can probably explain your question, Mr. McWilliams, at the outset. Again, we do have a concept, we don't have actual construction plans, we don't have turning radiuses, things like that, determined at this point. The justification for this is a traffic flow issue that Bob can explain, and that I believe the applicant can explain as well. I will tell you all, she is a little bit nervous today. She's got a letter that she's going to read you, and I've got 10 copies of it that I can give you all, if you all wouldn't mind sharing between a couple of you all, so you can follow along as she reads, if that's okay. So, I'm going to let Bob get up here, and then I'll hand out this letter and let her speak.
Okay. Benzand, if you would, just again, for the record, be your name and address.
Okay, yeah, and it's Bob Benzand with Benzand Engineering Land Surveying, 306 West Jefferson, LaGrange, 40031. I was paying attention, and hopefully I'll get all your questions answered here. Again, let me start out by emphasizing that this is a concept. We are looking for the approval of a waiver that was established when they approved the subdivision many years ago. At that time, obviously, no one envisioned that there would be a daycare sitting on Lot 1 in the subdivision. But that is what we have. The daycare has been successful, it's expanded, and because of that, they're experiencing the growing pains, and a big part of what has occurred is, we've created a safety issue, we have a conflict of school buses, of cars, parents and children, and this is the best solution that we have come up with to try to help with the situation. And I'll just try to explain the traffic flow the best that I can. Obviously, this is Commerce Parkway, this is Spencer Court. Traffic, be it bus and parents, must come down Spencer Court, and then they come in this existing entrance here. The buses do not pull into the parking lot. There's not enough adequate room here for the buses to pull in and to turn around. The Oldham County School Board has a regulation that the buses cannot go in reverse, I guess, unless it's an absolute necessity, and it's very rare that you'll ever see them do that. So, what happens is that the school buses have to go all the way down to the ends of Spencer Court, turn around, they come back, and then they drop off the students approximately right here, and then they must walk a distance of almost 200 feet to an access door that's on this side of the building. You can just imagine what kind of issues that creates, when you've got all these little children, it's raining, it's snowing, that it's really not a convenient situation there. Also, the issue that we're having with the parents is that they're coming in the entrance, and you can see you've got parking on both sides, all the way down to here. So, they come in, most of them come into the front door, and they drop off. That means they're parking, they're backing, you've got cars that are, it's a cross-flow. If someone parks here, and they get out with their child, then they're potentially, they're, you know, they're walking across someone that may be backing out. Anytime you've got small children, obviously, you want to just minimize the time that they're spending in the parking lot. If we had this exit here, obviously, the parents could pull, oh, did I do that?
All right.
I didn't do that, did I?
On a technical issue.
Okay, obviously, the parents could pull through, they could drop off at the front door, and then they could continue on out without a backward movement. Again, I want to emphasize that the location is pretty well pinned down where we would like to have the entrance, but the design parameters are not been established yet, and we will certainly make sure that it meets all the requirements of, I guess, both the county and the city, because technically, this property is in the city of LaGrange. Just a couple little bits of information that I would like to throw out there. On the north side of Commerce Parkway, there are only 11 existing curb cuts. I think everybody maybe perceives that we have a lot more, but there's only 11. On the south side, we have five, so, just wanted to throw that out there. I think everybody has a perception that maybe a lot more curb cuts are existing, and they're not. The other point that I wanted to make is that in the past 15 months, this body has approved two site plans on Commerce Parkway, and maybe a third, two that I know of for sure. One was for hardware, and one was for a car dealership. Both of those site plans approved two, not one, but two entrances on Commerce Parkway. And again, we're only asking for the one entrance on Commerce Parkway.
So, to be clear, you're saying that there was, each plan that got approved, approved two cuts, so there was a total of four?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, okay.
And that's all occurred in the past 15 months.
Bob, I don't know if you know the answer to this question, but in the pictures, there was what looked to be something white that might be a drainage swale or anything. My understanding is that was a piece of garbage. Is that, do you know if there's, your drawing doesn't show anything about it, is there a drain somewhere in this location?
It must have been just a, yeah, a piece of plastic.
I'm trying to see if he knows, it's okay.
Yeah, no, we haven't designed or done anything in the road right away, so, yeah, it's not anything that we put out there intentionally.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Shum?
Thank you all, and thank the commission for allowing us time to come.
Name and address for the record.
Walter Shum, 6100 Breeze Hill Road, Crestwood, Kentucky. I've been fortunate enough to be awarded the contract for two expansions on this unit, one in 2015 and one in 2017. The owner has graciously allowed us to work on this project, and we have completed that project now, almost doubling the size of the center in the last two years because of imminent demand from the community for these services. This is a highly rated childcare center and highly sought after. I would expect after the completion of the last phase with an integrated learning center, the after-school traffic will only continue to increase, and the number of buses that will come down to the facility to drop off children will increase as well. When we filed the original plan with planning and zoning, we did not anticipate putting another entrance on, but as the building grew and the construction was completed, and we saw the amount of parking lot that we were going to have to add, it became pretty evident that we were going to look for a way to create better traffic flow, and I think Mr. Benzand has nailed it very well. This entrance and exit would allow traffic to flow conveniently through the center, and also would allow the buses to turn in and turn out. With that, I'd like to introduce the owner of the Learning Garden Daycare Center, and that is Raquel Richel, and she has a short statement to read.
My name's Raquel Richel, and I'm the owner of the Learning Garden. And I started the Learning Garden 10 years ago to provide quality preschool in Oldham County. We're a licensed preschool center that caters to both parents and children from ages six weeks through school age. Our focus is to be sure that all the children who attend the Learning Garden are kindergarten-ready by the time they graduate from our program. We have almost doubled in size over the past 10 years from the two separate expansions. We spent almost $500,000 in 2015, and again, we just completed another $550,000 addition this month. We project that our enrollment will continue rapidly with the growth and the popularity of the LaGrange area. The Rawlings Company is one of our largest customer bases in the area. We currently serve over 50 families that are employed at the Rawlings Company. We work with Rawlings HR Department when they are recruiting new employees to the area that need childcare services. We serve families from Oldham County, as well as the surrounding counties of Jefferson, Henry, Shelby, and Trimble Counties. We currently employ over 46 women from the community, and we have over 150 children enrolled at the Learning Garden, and hopefully by the end of the year, it'll be closer to 180. When I purchased the property, I was not aware of the binding element in question, and when I donated the land for the bike path, I was not aware of that binding element either. So, it's kind of come as a surprise to me at this late date, and obviously, after a considerable investment. Our parking lot, right now, is a very busy place with parents of young children and school bus pickup and drop-offs, which is why we expanded our parking lot to accommodate the increased traffic. So, we are requesting an additional entrance and exit from the Learning Garden in order to ensure the safety of the children.
Can I get your address for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry, 5909 Brentwood Drive, Crestwood, Kentucky.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just have one other question for Mr. Benzand, if I could get him to come back up. But, Bob, it's kind of apparent from the drawing, but can you explain what the distance is from the proposed entrance on Commerce to Spencer Court?
Oh, yes. On my drawing here, from the center line of Spencer Court to the center line of the proposed entrance is 400 feet, so that's a significant amount. There's another existing entrance to the west that is 250 feet, but there is a separation of 400 feet in between there, and like Jim had mentioned earlier, the odds are, with the road expansion, we believe that it would probably be a dedicated center turn lane, so I'm not sure that turn lane links and tapers and all that would necessarily play into our situation. And of course, that hasn't been designed, so we can't plan for that, and we really can't address that, so.
And Bob, if, just, I don't know if you're the right person to ask, but I'm going to ask you anyway. If I worked at Rawlings, and I dropped my child off here, what way would I leave? What would be the most logical way for me to leave this property and to head to work?
If we had the proposed...
Yes, if you had the proposed it.
You would exit the proposed exit and go to the right, and then head down to... What, I'm not sure what the street...
No, because you have the bike, that's the thing that was...
Well, come on back up here, and you explain what you think.
Need to get you on record.
There's a dispute, apparently, about which way you get there.
No dispute. I drive it every day when I go through the project now. You would go through the center, come down, and turn left, and go down to the new overpass I-71, which directly accesses the access road to Rawlings. So, if this were in fact only a right-turn lane, they would have to go all the way back down to 393, get onto the interstate, go up to Exit 22, which I also sit in every morning, backed up onto the interstate for folks turning into Rawlings, and you would turn right then. So, alleviating by allowing a left or right turn, the buses could easily go to the right to go down to Bunton, and those that were going to Rawlings could go to the left and alleviate some of that traffic on I-71 as well.
So, Mr. Shum, you're advocating for somebody to use the new bridge, is what you're telling me?
Well, you know, they built it, we paid for it, I think they ought to use it. I certainly find it convenient access to get up and around the traffic lights at the interstate, I-71 interchange.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Baxter.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes our presentation.
Okay, all right. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in support of this application? Anyone here that would like to speak in support of? Okay, is there anyone here that would like to testify or have questions opposing the application? Is there anyone here that has questions or would like to speak in opposition to? Okay, seeing none, we'll now open it up for questions of the applicant by the commissioners. Mr. McWilliams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Benzand? How you doing today?
Good, how are you, sir?
The new entrance, should it be approved, is ingress and egress?
That's correct. We are proposing that it would be ingress and egress.
Okay, if you would help me, then, let's say, so a school bus, assuming the changes are made that we had talked about earlier, had been talked about earlier, could come in the new entrance?
It could, but I think we would propose that they come in the... Um, it, it could, but I think we would propose that it, that they come in the other way.
Okay, all right, so, so vehicular, automobile, van, whatever. Now, could you show me, uh, when they come in and, and go to the right and go to the, the walk-in area and the ramp, they, they let their kids off there? And then they would exit up here, or would they turn around or, or what?
Well, that's what we're trying to do. We're, we're trying to keep them from turning around, we're trying to keep them from having a backward movement.
In, in here and out there? In there and out here?
Oh, it in, in the existing entrance.
Uh-huh.
And then to the west and to the south.
Then out?
And then out here. That, that's the preferred.
And then the reverse of that.
Mr. McWilliams, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Baxter.
Let me make sure, because I, I don't want there to be confusion about this. Are you talking about bus traffic or car traffic?
Car traffic.
Okay, so you were speaking of bus traffic, were you not?
I, I was speaking of bus traffic.
My bad.
You're saying that bus traffic will come in this way, work its way through, and exit here?
That's right.
Okay.
Because the, the door for the buses on the inside, so you would want them to be.
And, and Mr. McWilliams is asking you about vehicular traffic coming in here?
Yes.
Or here, or both?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, can you answer that question?
Uh, yes, I, we, we would prefer probably that, that they would, would take the same route as the buses, where that they would, they would come in here.
Huh?
Flow through and then exit here.
Okay.
But there's, there's nothing that would necessarily prevent that.
But now what about people coming in here at the new entrance? Where do they exit?
Well, they, they would have the option. They, they could come in.
Turn around?
They could park, th- and then they could go back out that way. Or they, they could go on and come out this way. That, that, it would be difficult to control that.
I understand, just want to make sure that that's, uh, what you were thinking. Thank you.
And before I, is that all, Mr. McWilliams? Okay, uh, before I get, uh, Mr. Finney had a question, but I also have one on the, uh, I think Mr. Harris pointed out that the radius there already on that, uh, entrance is not adequate as, as designed here. Do you have enough space and enough room, distance between the, the building and the, and parking lot or whatever, to get that radii, uh, large enough for a school bus?
Yeah, we would make whatever modifications that were necessary, because it can be changed, it's just a parking lot.
Right, sure.
Yeah.
And same thing where it exits out onto Commerce, that would, might have to be widened out a little bit or whatever.
Right, we, we could, we could design whatever would be necessary.
Mr. Finney?
Um, can we get this picture back up on the screen, please?
Which one is it, Sam?
That's the one we had in our packet. Okay, in that, in that photograph there, there is a black line that kind of goes around the front of the building or the side of the building and up, up in behind the lot next to the, next existing building, comes back around and connects back to the building again. Is that a property line? What is that line?
This, you're speaking of this line right here?
Yes, sir.
That, that's a fence. The, the west and the north part of the property and the improvements that you see there, that's playground, uh, playground area. That's where the children play.
All right, in behind, in behind the building, uh, looks like there's some trees in there. The black line comes over there and it connects, connects close to where the entrance is off of, uh, Spencer Court, correct?
Again, that, that's all fence, that's all fence. The, the, the red line that's on there that they're showing as the property line should be shifted up north.
Okay.
About 15 feet there.
Okay, should, that's, that line should actually be, uh, uh, further north?
Right, yeah, yeah. This is, this is the property line and, and, and the fence line.
What would, what would prevent a round-the-building traffic coming off Spencer, making a loop around, and then going back out on Spencer, making a, just a, uh, and have maybe a one-way loop around there to, uh, alleviate the, the traffic flow and keep the, uh, entrance off of, uh, Commerce?
We looked at that option and, and the option is the fact that it, it would just destroy the area that they have for the playground.
You're, you're drawing that line down through the area. This, this would be up on the property line and come back around the back. It would actually, it would actually, from my views, go in behind those areas and would not destroy anything.
Um.
Looking at, looking at the picture.
That I think would prevent us from doing that.
Man, oh.
Sure.
You got a lot of squiggly lines here, I don't know if my fat finger can make a fine line.
Well, let's clear that out for you.
Okay, on, on the backside of the property, sir?
You're, you're on the wrong.
Whoops, I'm on the wrong side. Um, as you come in, dumpsters and, uh, fencing to contain the kids. Uh, as you come up to here, there's about a 5% slope, Bob, up to the next building.
I thought like a 10%.
Okay, so a 10% slope coming almost all the way down to the toe of the playground. Those roof structures you see are actually pavilion structures for the kids to get other, under in the same, in the, uh, hot sunlight. Uh, additionally, the building now looks like this because that expansion has been added and this playground now is expanded to this area. So, there is not, uh, enough area between the slope from the other building, which rises about 20 feet from my blue line to the fence line here. Uh, a very severe slope that we would essentially have to make vertical in order to provide egress through this area. Or, uh, we would have to take part of the parking lot, which is, or I'm sorry, part of the, the, uh, playground, which is now, given the expansion, uh, just adequate for the number of kids that attend the center. Uh, and we have, she, the owner has spent considerable money expanding the playground all the way to the fence line, uh, to give the children more area to play with the addition of that, um, 4,000 square feet of building. Does that answer your question, sir?
Can I add one other thing also? We, we're controlled, uh, by regulation on how much ground that we can make impervious. And that, that secondary access road would, would take up a lot more of the, the pervious space. I, I haven't done the numbers on it, so I can't say that that would put us over the, over the top, but, um, that's something that we'd have to look at as well.
So, could it, could a, this different route be a consideration? Or do you feel it is, do you feel it is, is, uh, um, kind of prohibitive because of, due to terrain and/or?
The, the terrain, the existing conditions, the fact that we're going to lose so much of the playground area and, and the cost, that, that, that would be a very expensive proposition to build that. And then again, we would have to look and see if we can actually do it, if it would meet the regulations, if we would exceed the, the pervious, uh, surface area that, that we're allowed in this space.
Okay, thank you very much.
Just one other thing, I was going to ask Amy if she could pop up the picture. It, it is confusing because that aerial does not accurately depict the structure right now. So, what, what has been added on, it's about here. This part of this building is all new. So, it moves us much closer to that property line that, that you were referencing, where they're in the playground area. Uh, thi- this part is not depicted in your aerial. The aerial predates the, this expansion. So, you've got a whole nother footprint that is not showing up in that aerial that, that is going to, uh, jut into the, the open space that you're looking at as a potential way on the left side of the building that, that's going to take up a big part of that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Douglas?
Um, I guess this will be a good question to ask is, was, is this proposal for removing this binding element in conjunction with utilization of the school buses to come into the parking lot? Is that the purpose of this? I mean.
I, I don't think that's the total purpose of it, I mean.
Well, I heard, we've heard a lot of testimony and, and that we're trying to get the school bus in off the road to keep from the kids walking 200 feet across the parking lot. So, I'm assuming that the owner of the daycare is concerned of the safety of the children.
That, that is correct, and that, Mr. Shum, I think is going to speak to that.
Uh, this entire discussion started about halfway through the building project as we saw the footprint of the expansion. And I was standing there one day watching children unload from a, from a bus about here and walking across the parking lot into a doorway here and some of them coming around here. And as a member of the school board, I was horrified to see children unloading on Spencer Court, uh, from the, from the right, or the, the right-hand side of the road, uh, excuse me, from the left-hand side of the road. And I said, hey, we should find a better way to bring the traffic through this area. The parking lot as it was originally designed is somewhat constrictive. And I talked to the engineer who had done the site plan, Mr. Vin Sand, and Mr. Vin Sand, uh, penciled out this idea one day and, uh, we presented that to the owner. Uh, because of the cost of even this proposal, she was somewhat reluctant, but agreed. Uh, and actually, after some thought, quite endorsed the idea that the buses could come through and exit, uh, and the children could exit from the right-hand side of the bus. As Mr. McWilliams knows after years of serving, what side of the door the school bus has, uh, that this would be more than a matter of convenience, but a matter of safety as well, uh, as the utilization of after-school programs from each school is going to only grow. So, it is absolutely a safety issue, sir.
Um, I guess that brings me to my next question because you've mentioned it. I'm aware that you're on the school board. I, I would've thought that maybe the applicant or someone would've brought some type of concurrence or proposal from the school board, or from the school transportation department that would outline that they would be able to access this parking lot if this was done, um, for safety reasons. Because I'm not sure, even if you propose this entrance, will the school bus driver still use that parking lot and come out that entrance because of the size of the parking lot? Is the parking lot capable of handing, handling two lanes of traffic and making that turn around the building with parking on both sides?
There is, uh.
For safety reasons?
I can't answer that question, I'll leave that to the transportation experts that the board has hired. Uh, on this side of the parking lot, there is no parking. So, there is in fact plenty of, uh, room for cars and even a car and a bus to pass because we've had cement trucks and dump trucks going in and out one entrance at the same time currently. So, I can unequivocally tell you that if we can get those big machines in and out, uh, against each other in this area and back out, that a school bus driver is deft enough to actually negotiate that. And as Mr. Vin Sand has said, uh, we are, this could look like this if it had to, uh, as long as the county engineer is satisfied with the turning radiuses. We leave that to the engineering professionals to design. We're here purely to get this concept approved so we can go into the design phase rather than spending the money on the design phase, uh, putting the cart in front of the horse. So, uh, yes, to answer your question, after watching the large amount of construction equipment, which we navigated through that area while the center was open and the kids and the parents and so forth, uh, I might add, without incident, and the kids and the parents were all coming and going and backing out one entrance, um, it made great sense to propose this, uh, this second entrance and exit.
I'm, I agree with you there, uh, and I'm, I'm, I'm fully aware that the construction went on there, but I'm just concerned that, uh, we're proposing that the school bus use this new entrance if it's approved. Um, but we didn't ask the bus transportation department if they would even use the parking lot in the entrance. And maybe we can get an answer from someone, uh, reference that because I, I think that was a highlight that this is what's being proposed.
Uh, I don't know.
And I, and I'm just, I'm just concerned that we'll still have school buses still using Spencer Court. And, and we'll have a nice new entrance out there.
Well, you will have school buses using Spencer Court, but they'll be turning left into the parking lot.
But will they still go down to the court because maybe they're told they're not allowed to drive into parking lots?
Again, that's only a question that the board can answer.
Michael Williams has left the room to make a phone call, so if we can just table this.
I would recommend it.
Speculate, we'll get an answer. Did you make that call, did we think? I, I, I thought maybe Mr. Douglas scared him into leaving, so he got up and ran out, I, I didn't know.
Is that all, Mr. Douglas? Right now, okay, Ms. Bonnet?
I have two questions. Um, one is, is there a particular reason you're not considering making the old entrance entrance only and the new curb cut exit only? And I'm not supposed to testify, but typically, I believe for safety reasons, schools normally have a one-directional flow for safety reasons. It seems like that would make more sense.
Uh, that's something we've discussed and we figured it would come up and we're prepared to live with that.
Okay, and then my.
And certainly our, our, obviously our preference and, and desire is that the approval would be that we enter on Spencer, that we exit onto Commerce, uh, either, either left or right onto Commerce.
That seemed to be, make more sense to me.
That would be fine.
Uh, my second question is probably for Mr. Vin Sand. Um, have you all discussed or have any ideas about how to handle the drainage along Commerce Parkway? If the new exit is approved, were you putting in a culvert? I see, I see a retaining wall or something on the plan. Can you just go over that a little bit and explain? Because it has the slope and the dip.
Sure, yeah. It, again, it, it hasn't been formally designed. I've, I've done a, a rough design, which would be, um, obviously modified. But, but the entrance would be, uh, it would be in conformance with, uh, entrance requirements. The radii would have to be appropriate for the school buses. Uh, there would be a culvert, um, that would be installed in the low point for the ditch, which would allow the water to continue to flow from east to west. And then, um, it stays in a ditch and then it runs into, um, another ditch that runs down this property line and, and crosses under the road into a detention basin on the other side. Um, the, the slopes, we would continue the slope off the road, which is a 2%. Uh, and I've looked at the numbers, we can do it after it comes up, it would be on a 5%, which is perfectly acceptable for an entrance. Um, again, the, the specifications it would meet, uh, we would do it according to the state highway department as far as the, the depth of material and make sure that it, it's in place. The head walls, uh, would, would be safety head walls. Again, uh, typically what we would do on an entrance. So, it, it wouldn't be any different than any other, it, it's not going to take anything special, um, if that's what you're asking.
Thank you, I just wanted clarification.
Okay, sure.
Mr. Hampton?
Yes, uh, I see that the soon-to-be enrollment is 180. What is the max enrollment proposed?
Answer the question you guys think. Sorry. Um, it really just depends on how we structure our classrooms. Uh, that's, that's with the three additional classrooms we added. We have that amount of space available right now in our classrooms to fill. We also have an additional classroom for school-age children, which would be an additional 30, 30 children on top of that. So, it would be in excess of 200.
And since you've grown so much, my second question, uh, since you've been this, uh, successful, is this plat, from an addition standpoint, is it, I know you can't predict the future, but is there other expansion even available at this site in the future?
Uh, we'd have to go up, in my opinion, just because we wouldn't want to take from the playground. Uh, you know, with that many children, we actually schedule our children on the playground as it is so that, you know, everybody has plenty of time to run around and, uh, so, no. Um, I think really we're probably, um, as big as the center itself will get, but how we structure our classrooms internally is what will determine our numbers.
And I want to go back to my first question again. I know you said it depends on how many people you put in a classroom and all that, but you ought to have some idea what your maximum enrollment would be.
Uh, well, our building, uh, capacity is 283. So, there are state ratios, uh, for the age of children and the number of children that are in the classrooms with the teachers, so that's why I go back to the ratios in the classroom. With, uh, for example, infants is a, it's a one-to-five ratio. So, if we have an infant room, we can only have 10 children in that size classroom, so.
Thank you.
Two teachers.
Two teachers.
Two teachers, so.
Yeah.
So, if you move those things around, that's how you can get to the 283, if you've got more older children, if you're.
Right, so the one classroom that we haven't, uh, set up as a classroom yet is our school-age classroom, which is, we're waiting to make sure we can get buses in there. So, we have 30 positions available for school-age children now. So, that would be the addition.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Okay, um, before we move on here, I had a couple of other questions folks wanted to ask. But, uh, Mr. Williams, would you come up and, we need to get you sworn in and I, I, you nodded your head when you walked in the door a minute ago, so I just want to get that on the record, what that means. So, let's get you sworn in, Ms., Ms. Fox.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Just name and address and.
Michael Williams, Oldham County Board of Education, 6165 West Highway 146 in Crestwood.
Okay.
I just got off the phone with our transportation department. They would come out and look at the lot, but more than likely, yes, we would use the lot to navigate the buses through.
Okay. Mr. Douglas, does that answer your question? Okay, thank you, sir.
Welcome.
All right, I had, uh, Ms. Smith down and then I had, Mr. King.
Um, Bob?
You were talking about the 400 feet from the new entrance to Spencer Court. At 45 miles an hour, how long does it take a vehicle to travel that 400 feet? I'm sure you've got a book that's got a formula somewhere.
Yeah, off the top of my head, I think it's, is it six seconds, Scott? I think it's six seconds. I'm not positive.
Thank you.
I could figure it out and let you know.
That, I thought it was about that. But, and then you've got, if the, if, I guess the lights, when you've got people coming out that can turn either way onto Commerce, I foresee a backup for the left-hand turn toward LaGrange. And then you've got, you've got the six seconds to travel that distance, and then you've got human reaction time. And have, for the, by the time you know you can move, before you move your foot to the accelerator, is there a formula for that?
I'm sorry, I'm not exactly following your question.
I want to know, at six seconds for 400 feet, that's, in your design, not just of this parcel, but any parcel, at 45 miles an hour, is that a problem?
Well, it wouldn't, you're trying to throw 400 feet in there, and that's not the issue. What, your reaction time and your perception would be how far you could see in both directions. Just the fact that there is an entrance at Spencer Court doesn't have any bearing on your reaction time or your visibility. This is, this location is excellent, because it's flat. There are no obstructions. So you can see in both directions probably 1,500 feet. Am I missing her question?
No, you're not. We have a standard table that we use when we give an encroachment permit. Now, this permit would actually be granted by the city of LaGrange, but they use the same table. Our most common speed limit that we look at is 25 miles an hour. Our table shows 220 feet required to see coming out onto a road or coming off of a road, making a left, because you're turning into oncoming traffic.
Right.
So that's for 25 miles an hour. I believe 45 is somewhere around 410 feet. But we haven't done one in a while, so I don't remember exactly what it says. But we have a 30-inch object and a 24-inch object sits off the ground. One represents the driver's eye height, one represents what we're trying to see. And we measure the distance between them, and we set one where the car is going to be, and we go down the right-of-way and edge of pavement, set the other one, and then we come back and see if we can see it.
With all encroachments, that's a formula for all encroachments?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
All right. Mr. King?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Mr. Vinsand, if you'll hang, I think I'm going to lean on you for this next bit.
Sure, sure.
All right. So trying to get an idea of the site limitations and so forth. Were there parking spots added with the expansion of the building? Maybe that's for Mr. Shum.
Yeah, we're looking at 10 to 12, and that's in this area here.
Okay. And will there be any lost to this configuration?
No, no.
All right.
But let me back up and answer that question, I think, the way that I probably should. If we find that we have to make some modifications in the parking lot for the school buses to safely travel through, we may end up having to lose a couple. I'm looking at one, one that I'm not real sure about, coming around this radius, maybe in this area right here, just to make sure that we're safe. Again, we will look at that.
So if you, if you had to lose some spaces, would you be within compliance for the size building that is there?
I think we're well within compliance.
All right. All right. Any consideration given to a second entrance on Spencer Court?
The issue there...
I would anticipate a number of limitations, so I'd like to hear what those are.
Yeah, that's a real easy answer, and that is, the reason that the existing entrance is here is that you want the separation from the existing entrance between Spencer and Commerce. That's, see, we've only got 200 feet along the property line there. You really want to be 250. It's really closer than we want it to be to start with. So that would completely eliminate the possibility of another entrance. You know, I see what you're saying, maybe right in here. And see, if you think about it, it's going to be sitting right on top of the existing entrance of Commerce and Spencer. And that's, we would never do that. I mean...
I would anticipate that would consume a number of parking spaces, and also. Mr. Urban, did you have something to interject with that? Is it, okay.
Lean him in to look at it.
All right. If there is a potential widening of Commerce Parkway, would that encroach on your ability to do so as well?
Say it again.
Mr. Urban spoke earlier about a potential consideration of widening on Commerce Parkway. Would that consume additional easement on your side of the road?
No, because Commerce Parkway is 100-foot right-of-way. And that means that 50-foot on the north and the south of the center line is road right-of-way, and there's plenty of road right-of-way out there.
All right. Mr. Chairman, that's all I have. Thank you, Bobby.
Okay. Any additional questions? We've got, we're down to about, oh, Mr. Harris?
Can I add something?
Okay.
We are trying to get a study done about Commerce Parkway, so we know where things are. We actually don't know that Commerce Parkway is in the middle of the right-of-way. So we don't know that there's 100 feet on each side of Center Line. We'd like there to be.
It's close.
Okay.
And I can say that from the, because I've surveyed a lot of the properties along there, and it's close. It's within 2 feet.
But we're having that study done now, so we don't know where it is.
All right. Commissioners, we're down to about a little over two minutes here on our questioning time. Is there, yes, sir, Mr. Falvey, you have a question?
Yes, my dear Mr. Harris. I just want to know, is the 400 feet from the proposed entrance to Spencer, is that the Oldham County regulations?
We don't have a regulation that covers that specifically. There's lots of sayings about good engineering, and that's one of them.
Is your mic on, sir?
It is now. Thank you.
And that's one of them. It's just a, it's a good place to start. Your judgment calls.
Well, then what about the 250 to the east for the other driveway? Is that adequate?
Well, that can't be any farther away. That's at the edge of their property.
Right.
So they've met every reasonable accommodation, putting it there. To come back this way, we would not let them put it in the right-of-way of Commerce Drive, or the city would not let them. It's not our right-of-way. And if it's 50 feet that way, they're not coming all the way to the front. I mean, these things would literally be on top of each other, and there's no way a bus could do that. So it wouldn't do any good.
And Mr. Harris, you said Commerce, but I think you mean Spencer, right? They wouldn't be able to put another entrance on Spencer.
Well, they wouldn't be able to put another one within the Commerce 50-foot right-of-way into Spencer. So we wouldn't let them come all the way out.
I just missed the...
And Mr. Vinsand was correct. We don't want, you'd never get out, if there's any traffic at all on Spencer, the bus would sit there forever. A car would sit there for too long.
Okay. Thank you. And just one for Mr. Urban.
Okay.
If this is approved, did you say you do have a binding element that you would want proposed, that if Commerce was widened, then you'd take another look at it?
Yes. Yeah, I have four, actually, binding elements. When we get to decision-making, I'll read them and see if the applicant agrees to them, and...
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any additional questions? All right. Let's move into, I guess, a final statement of the applicant. Mr. Baxter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think the issue really is, is this is a use that may not have been necessarily envisioned when this, when this property was developed in the first place, back in 2000, and I think it was 2005, when the development plan was approved. We have a situation here where, you know, safety is a major concern, traffic flow is a major concern. We certainly don't have any objection to a binding element that would be a one-way entrance in here and a one-way exit here, being able to exit either direction. But it just seems to make good sense, and I think probably had my client known that this was going to be a limitation in the beginning, she may have considered purchasing a different piece of property. That doesn't excuse, her ignorance of it doesn't excuse anything, but it, but it does make a bit of a compelling case for allowing this binding element to be removed as it relates to this particular piece of property. Thank you all.
All righty. Thank you, sir. And with that, Docket PZ 17025 is complete. And I'll ask now Mr. Urban if he would outline what's being requested here on this, to amend this binding element, and also what binding elements he would like to see us consider.
Sure. Well, again, it's a simple request to amend a binding element, and the potential conditions of approval to this request that I've written down during all this testimony are this. In your staff report, there's one listed, and that is that the approval shall only apply to binding element number four, considered at the August 22, 2017 Oldham County Planning Commission public hearing, and all other binding elements from Docket PZ 05003 shall remain in effect. The second one is that should access interfere or cause capacity or safety issues with the future widening of Commerce Parkway, the city of LaGrange reserves the right to revoke the access to Commerce Parkway. Another one, and they've agreed to this, and it's simple, is that the radius of the entrance is to be revised to accommodate bus movements. And then one that they've already agreed to is that the new access shall be used as an exit only.
Mr. Baxter is attorney for the applicant. Are those acceptable?
Well, we have a bit of an issue, I think, with the revocation, the potential revocation. I mean, if we're going to expend this money to put this entrance in, you know, considerable expense to have the city then come back in a year, if some study's done, and I know there's no, that we're even just planning this study, so it could be a long time, but to have them come back and say, "Well, I know you've spent all this money, but now we're taking it away." I'm not sure my client is willing to agree to that. The other ones are not a problem, but that one is an issue for my client.
Mr. Harris, do you have something to add?
If you combine the results of all of those things, now we're not talking about a bus just entering the parking lot, we're talking about a bus making the through route through a parking lot. So the one that you said a bus can enter the parking lot needs to be, a bus can safely maneuver through the parking lot.
Well, that's on private property, and that's really not our purview, but...
It is our, it is our purview. So is the entrance ramp. And if we're talking about the safety of kids, then bus needs, I mean, think about when a bus stops on the road, the flashing lights go off, the stop signs go out, everybody knows on a road I might encounter a school bus. How many people expect to find one in a parking lot? So, you know, if you can't maneuver through the parking lot, you've got extra cars, kids dart between, it needs to safely be able to maneuver its way through the parking lot. That's just my opinion.
Okay. Mr. Urban, the second one that, you know, that they've got a concern about, you have suggested, you know, something that we could consider?
I've suggested what you should consider. You can choose to include it or not include it. That's up to you. And the issue, of course, is that we don't know, given that we're embarking on hiring, we just received proposals last week at the fiscal court meeting to study existing conditions first on Commerce Parkway, and then eventually, future capacity issues. It could be several years before we, we have no money yet to build any expansion of Commerce Parkway, but we need to understand what it is that we're trying to do. I understand that an investment in a curb cut is costly, but again, we don't know whether, because we expand the roadway to three lanes or four lanes, or potentially even five lanes, whether those radiuses are going to work any longer of this particular curb cut. I don't know that we can really say there will be a problem, but again, we don't know. The revocation becomes, again, a condition that the city of LaGrange would be considering, not the planning commission. And they can choose to say it's just fine, if we can engineer everything properly or on an expansion. But I think it would be several years before we actually see any widening, because there's no money in any funding source to widen Commerce Parkway at this particular time. But at least we're starting to study it and try to figure out what we have, first of all, and then where utilities are located, and then also the future capacity of the roadway. You can choose to not add it if you think that that's a...
Okay. All right. Well, you've heard Mr. Urban's suggestions on the binding elements. Mr. Carter, is anything you need to add?
No.
That we need to consider? Ms. Alvey?
My only point would be clarification of what the new binding element is going to read. We're not deleting it. We need the language of what it's going to read, because it affects two lots, just not the applicant's lot. It's lots one and 13.
Okay. So we're only considering it on this lot at this point?
Correct. So the binding element would read whatever it currently reads, and it'd be only for lot 13.
Well, that's number one. Yeah, in effect, for lot number...
Yes.
And this is 13 or one?
13.
One.
So it's still in effect for lot 13. We're not removing the whole binding element.
Right. So the first binding element, I would just add at the end, and it says, "All other binding elements from PZ 05003 shall remain in effect for lot number..."
13.
One and 13. All other binding elements, well, all other binding elements, well, okay, let me think. Actually, it should be that this approval only is applicable to lot number one.
Okay.
I'll just add a sentence that says, "This approval is only applicable to lot number one."
All right. Commissioners, we're down now to a motion to consider on Docket PZ 17025, which is to amend a binding element. And you heard Mr. Urban outline four potential binding elements. I think we also heard the applicant say they were, would be concerned or couldn't support the number-two binding element, which would say that it could be revoked at a future time if Commerce Parkway were expanded or widened, and that entrance created an issue that it could be removed. So that was, Mr. Urban, as Planning Director's recommendation, you know, it's certainly our call as to whether we consider that or whether we, whether we don't on that particular one. So let me open it up now, let's get a motion on the floor, and then we can discuss, you know, any binding elements or whatever at that point. So, yes, sir, Mr. King?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to move for approval of the application submitted. Believe we have and have experienced testimony that this use was not anticipated in the original approval, and I think that is true. I do not differentiate the traffic that is coming and going to this site that is not school bus traffic. I do not differentiate that traffic from other approved cuts up and down Commerce Parkway. I think it's important to have this traffic pattern on this site for the safety of the kids. And we see that the applicant has made a commitment to the one-way traffic configuration on the site to add to that objective. The binding elements that would be included with this are all of them, except for the number-two binding element, that would require them to vacate this cut. With all due respect to staff, I understand, but in this instance, I don't think I can go along with that. So that's my motion.
Okay. So you would be motion to approve the amendment to binding element with the three binding, number one, number three, and number four, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And not number two. All right. You heard the motion on the, you have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second? Okay, Ms. Bonnet, seconds? Now, any discussion on the motion to amend? Mr. McWilliams?
Mr. Chairman, a couple of questions for Mr. Urban, if possible. I heard you say that ultimately, it was going to be the city of LaGrange that would have to make the determination on whether or not Commerce Parkway issues would require that entrance to be closed at some time in the future. Correct? Yes. This segment of Commerce Parkway is within the city limits of LaGrange. Okay. That being said, do we even need that binding element? They, I don't think they can go take away curb cut without it. Okay. That's what I wanted to know. And... Not, again, not that it will happen, but it provides the option for the city to be able to say this... So the city, if we did not have the binding element in there, did I hear you say that that would limit the options of the city at some point in the future? But once it's in, I think it would, you know, it would... But once it's in, I think it would, would, you know, it would, it would remain. And, and that may be okay, but again, the big question mark is, we don't know. I don't, I don't really necessarily...
Could I get a, could I get a legal opinion on that?
Mr. Carter?
Actually, I don't know the answer to that question. I assume in an extreme case, the City, City of Crestwood has the right of eminent domain, and if they really, I mean, is it LaGrange or Crestwood? LaGrange, I guess, if they really, really wanted to do it, they could just take it and close it.
By eminent domain.
By eminent domain, and they have to pay for it.
Yes, sir.
But, the other, the answer to your other question is, is I, I'm not sure.
Okay, thank you. Second question, Mr. Urban, excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Have we done this before? I mean, is, are we establishing a precedent here, or has this type of situation occurred before?
Well, it's only unique to this because of the binding element that was established when this particular commercial subdivision was created.
Okay.
So...
So, no.
I think it stands on its own...
Okay.
...with no precedent.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Horton.
Mr. McWilliams asked my question, so, thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, Mr. Douglas.
I guess I have a couple of issues with the binding element. One is that I agree with Mr., the county engineer, Mr. Harris, about some wording of the parking lot, meaning the Oldham County School Board, Bus Transportation Department, of the ability of them being able to maneuver through that parking lot. And I know it's private property, or you're saying that it was private property, but I, I don't think you included that information in there, because I believe Mr. Williams indicated that it would have to be upon the approval of the Transportation Department at the school board, or the school, in order for them to maneuver in that parking lot. So, they're going to go in there and engineer it, and look at it, and see if they can actually do it. But we heard a lot of testimony that that's the reason why they really want this entrance, is to avoid these children having to walk 200 feet across the parking lot. And if it can't be done, then we're just putting in a new encroachment off of Commerce Parkway for traffic flow in and out. So, I, I'm just curious, there should be something in there about that, if, if the owner of the property is willing to give up parking spaces to have those buses to be able to come in and out of that parking lot.
Well, I would assume that if they really want a bus to get in there, do what, they'll do whatever it takes. If the Board of Education says, "We can't make the bus work," they'll go fix it.
I would, I would think so.
I've never seen that we've done a binding element that says you have to fix an internal parking lot to make something...
Well, not to say, but I, I don't see us putting a binding element that the City of LaGrange is going to give the permit, and that we're putting a revocation on it through the Planning Commission. I mean, the city's going to determine if they're going to give the permit or not, not us.
Right. We don't, but that, right now, the, the motion on the floor does not include that number-two, which would be to revulsion, taking that, removing that down the road.
Right, but we're having a discussion on those binding elements that were proposed. The, the only thing I, I'm concerned about is that, that there was a lot of testimony for us to, to consider putting in that second entrance to have the buses to come through their parking lot. And if it can't make it through the parking lot, are we just putting a new entrance in? If they can't go through the parking lot? If the school board decides not to do it.
Mr., you know, Williams is not in Transportation or whatever, but he went and talked to Transportation, and they said, you know, what he testified to was that they would try to make it work and, and, you know, that kind of thing, so...
To expand this only slightly, if an ambulance has to go in there, they don't want a backup either, so being able to get out with an ambulance, well, are we going to start designing it for a fire truck? Or a food delivery?
I think sometimes we do. I, I believe we've done it in commercial accounts or commercial developments, that we have mentioned the size of the parking lot and the parking spaces and the, and the design of the flow of the traffic coming and going, and the radius turn in the parking lot for trucks and semis. So, yes, I disagree with you on that. Yes, we have.
Anything else, Mr. Douglas? Okay, Mr. Horton. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Finney.
Mr. Douglas just asked my question.
Okay. All right, is there any further discussion on the motion to amend the binding elements with the addition of the three binding elements, number one, number three, and number four, as outlined by Mr. Urban? Is there any further discussion?
Well, are you suggesting there be another one added?
I just think it... I just thought when you made the remark about the radius and, and the ability for buses to come and into the entrances, that there would just be that addition that, that they would be able to maneuver in the parking lot, on the conditions that, that the owner's working with the school board on that. I mean, I, I don't know how you want to word it, but I thought Mr. Harris did a fine job wording it as a suggestion.
Uh, Mr. Horton.
Thank you. I'm just wondering if you can't clear this up by simply asking the applicant if they'll do, if they will agree to do it, or necessary to see that a school bus can get in and can get out and can maneuver. Would that not, would that not be replacing the need for a binding element?
Chairman, I, I don't think we have a choice. I mean, the, the, the school is going to say, "We can get a bus through there," or "We can't get a bus through there." The whole point, not the whole point, but a big part of this is, is to, for the safety concern of bringing the buses through there, Mr. Williams indicated that their transportation people would look at it, and, and they didn't see an issue, but they'd have to come out and make sure that it was okay, and, and so we're going to have to do whatever it takes to do that. I, I, alls I'm getting is, I think that's a little redundant. I mean, we're, we're going to have to do it whether you tell us to do it or they tell us to do it. So, the school board's going to tell us to do it.
And y'all have already testified that you're willing to do that.
Yes.
So, you know, I, I mean, I think that's, you know, it's on the record, so, you know, if you want a school bus to get through there, you know, you've got to meet their minimum requirements.
That's absolutely correct, yes, sir.
As, as did the school representative saying that they will pull in, will use...
Right. Okay. Mr. Finney, you have something?
Yes, just in regards to that, if, if with the adopting what the school board needs to do to get the buses through, is there the possibility that that will remove more parking spaces than are allowed by code and to be short parking spaces?
Well, I, again, I think we had testimony from the applicant that said that that wouldn't happen, that they had more than enough spaces, even if they had to lose, you know, some spaces to put this entrance in, or this exit in, that they still had, you know, and I don't want to speak for them, but I think that testimony was given that they would be adequate spaces...
Clarification, there should be adequate parking, parking spaces to lose to make that happen.
Uh, you want to address that, just to...
That was, that was Mr. Vinsand, Vinsand's testimony, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
All right, are we ready to...
Question, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, question's been called, all right. The motion on the floor is to approve Docket PZ 17025, which is an amendment to the binding elements on, on CW Park, and it's located 2100 Spencer Court. And the three binding elements that Mr. Urban outlined would be number one, number three, and number four. Number two that he outlined would not be part of this motion. So, with that, Ms. Fox, if you would, take the vote, and this is a motion to amend the binding elements. Binding element.
Ms. Bonet?
Yes.
Ms. Crosby?
Yes.
Mr. Hampton?
Yes.
Mr. Falvey?
Yes.
Mr. Finney?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.[1758.78]